Good evening, and welcome to the Norwood Board of Selectments meeting for the 5th of November 2019. Let us begin tonight, as always, with a pledge allegiance to our flag, followed by a silent moment of prayer or meditation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, and please be seated. Tonight, we have one appointment regarding the Norwood Cultural Council. We have Mr. Christopher Paddock and Arada Harangi.
I see.
Close enough. Submitting request to be appointed to the Norwood Cultural Council, so if you would just step up, please, and have a seat in front of us, both of you. And again, if you would just introduce yourselves and go from there.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Arty Pranspe. I just moved to Norwood four years back due to my husband's transfer in the field of software. So from that onwards, I just like to live and do a lot of activities related in Norwood. And I have my profession in interior designing, computer software engineering, and I'm trying to do more studies related to some pre-primary education with the, in learning English and grammar. And I'm trying to get myself more involved with volunteering in the school activities because of my interest in the art and craft field and because I like to be myself involved with the students and encourage them, motivate them with the different skills and different things related to art and craft or any activities that would help them in their future growth related to some cultural developments or maybe language skills or something. So I just like to be a part of that activities and volunteer my time, my skills, my experience. If I get to be a part of some activities, I'd try to get myself involved in that.
Thank you very much. Christopher?
I'm Chris Paddock. I moved to Norwood about four years ago, and not long afterwards, my daughter was born. And getting to watch her grow up here has been a really great opportunity. You know, when you meet people who've lived here for a long time, they say it's a great place to grow up, and I'm seeing that to be true. And we take advantage of all the opportunities, activities in town for her and for ourselves, my wife and I. And I'd like to be able to give back in some small way. I'm a teacher in the Boston Public School System, and the school that I work at, we really pride ourselves on our diversity and our able, our ability to engage, you know, every kind of student there is in the city of Boston. And so, again, I'd like to extend that here to do what I can to make this place a better place. I grew up in Providence, Rhode Island, and we were just given endless opportunities in the arts and in really anything we ever wanted to do, we could find a class for free. And again, as somebody who benefited from that, I'd just love to be able to continue providing that for young people and adults alike.
Thank you both for your commitment and your interest in the Cultural Council. We have been given to us your resumes or a letter of intent, if you will, a letter of intent. And you seem very passionate, if I can find one word to describe the both of you, of being on the Cultural Council. We also have a letter from the Cultural Council itself, who are very, and they used the word keen, K-E-E-N, very keen on having you both on board. So with that said, I will open it to discussion for my board members. Questions for the board? Mr. Hajar?
Yes, thank you both for coming forward. This is what I love about meeting you in person. You can put the, you know, face to the name, and going forward, I'll always remember that. So I'm moved by both your resumes, your experiences, very diverse, and it's great. It's what we need. Chris, I'm really struck a few. I love Mr. Chairman, just want to read one paragraph in his, in his letter. This is what makes me so proud of representing the town of Norwood and having folks like yourselves in it. And Chris writes, "As a parent of a near-four-year-old, I am often struck by all the experiences afforded to her in our town. She is never for want of a fun thing to do or an experience to share with her friends, most of which are hosted by Norwood Town Departments or community-based organizations. I have also appreciated that these opportunities for enriching are not limited to children." I mean, that's an awesome paragraph and a statement to what this town is all about and its two efforts like yourselves that come forward and say, "I want to do this." And I'm glad you submitted your resumes and the opportunity to serve the Cultural Council for the town of Norwood. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else? Mr. Maloney, sir.
Thank you both for applying. You know, this board limits the number of members of the Cultural Council to nine. It can be anywhere from, a Cultural Council in any municipality can be, can consist of anywhere from five to 22 members. We top it out at nine. Took that action about a year or two ago. So I think with your pending appointments, we get to either eight or nine. I think we get to nine possibly. But, so you'll just about round out the council, and we've essentially remade it in the last year or two. I'm also impressed by what, by your written applications. Clearly, the effort you put into compose letters of this kind and this depth, show an interest in it. You'll have from the state about $11,500 to spend. That's, I think, what the award to Norwood is going to be. And then, do we appropriate something as well, Mr. Plasko?
We have this.
I think we have, like, a couple of thousand dollars or something like that, so. It's not a ton of money, but it's the kind of, it's the kind of money that can go a long way.
Let me put it this way, you won't have a company car.
I'm out of here.
What is, Arty, you talked a little bit about theater. Chris, are you a theater guy, music?
Mostly music is my background. Yeah, I performed and toured across the country for a couple of years. You know, I've been playing in bands and stuff like that since I was in high school.
Good. Good. And theater, right? Art, did you say, you mentioned that, I think?
No, I'm into the field of interior designing, computers, and that. So creativity is what is more needed in that, and so just that keeps me continuously into artwork and craft work. I also had set up myself during the Norwood Day of quilting and art crafts, but I would definitely like to share that skill with the community around so that, you know, they can come to know about the different skills of the, from paper and...
An added dimension to what we call culture.
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Howard, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had to compliment both of you for being willing to step forward and help us out here. And your credentials say it all to me for the two of you to be appointed here, and I'm very much for it. Just a point to make, speaking for high school students, the day house this weekend had, had on display art projects of, I would guess, 40 or more of the Norwood high school students, some photography, some drawings, of all sorts of things. One of them that struck me most was, one of the students had a display of the New York Park Five, that five young men who were, in the end, wrongly convicted of serious crimes, rape and what have you, and served like 20 years in jail each because of it, and then were vindicated finally. But for a student in high school to take that as a project, to display it with letters and what have you, I was kind of blown away by that one. But all of them showed me that at times, we'll be critical in our town of the ratings that some of our students get in our classrooms. But I've been several years, I've gone to the day house to see this once a year, the display of these items, and it just shows me how many young people we have who are very, very talented people in our town, and it makes me so proud of them, it really does. But hopefully, welcome to the Cultural Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Mr. Plasko?
Thank you. I'm, as always, equally impressed with your resumes and your interests of you, as you've expressed it. So I don't have a lot of questions, except for maybe one. You clearly have a passion to be involved, and we want new people, young people, coming forward, and they're looking particularly in the last couple of years to encourage people to come. But how did you find the Cultural Council? How did you find that as an outlet to get involved in the community? It's kind of a quiet, it's, you know, not upfront in the press and so forth. What type of organization, committee in the town? What's your connection? How did you get interested specifically in the Cultural Council?
Actually, I'm, I just got myself involved with the cultural event that was with the soccer ball culture event. I just went for a heenah art to be done for the small kids and everything. So there, I just got contact with a few of the members who were doing different activities involved with this. So they just passed on some links and website mentioning about this. So I just came, I went looking through that, I said, just thought that I came to know about the Maas Cultural Council, the how the process they grant to different towns, and how, what different projects could be involved in getting up the grants for the special town and getting, you know, developing some different planning where it could be executed in a different way to get more help for the community to work on some projects and bring everyone together with the purpose of art and everything. So that taught me that if my time could be involved in such kind of skills in bringing up things, I said, let's try for it.
My wife has really led the charge on getting us involved in a bunch of different community organizations. She has helped out with the Trails Committee, and, you know, she's always finding some way for us to be active in the town. It's really important to her and important to me, too. And again, as I said in my letter, I wasn't really aware of the Norwood Cultural Council until the event in the cemetery over the, on the Fourth of July about the reading of the Frederick Douglass piece. And that was where I really realized, like, oh, this isn't, like, you know, it's not just art class for kids. This is like a really broad thing that has the potential to teach everybody and to make everybody part of something new, on something that they're comfortable with and takes different perspectives on things. So that day, I was, you know, I was made aware of it in the larger Massachusetts Cultural Council, and the woman, one of the women who ran that, Kate Sibbing Dunn, asked me a couple of weeks ago if I might be interested in joining, and I said, "Oh, that, is that organization? Oh, yeah, totally, I'm in."
Now, I'm thrilled with the answers and all the other information, as we mentioned, your resumes and so forth. And, you know, just delighted that we have new people stepping forward and people who have taken actually the idea seriously and have prepared themselves for the position so well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Plasko. Before we take a vote, I just want to say thank you for your commitment to the town. It's very inspiring for me, anyway, to hear positive things coming from both of you. You've lived in the town five years or less, and you seem to be very satisfied with the town as it goes. The town is in the midst of a change. This town is changing. It's a whole generation of people are going to come up and make some big changes in this town, and you are two of them right here. So I want to thank you again. So do I have a motion from the board?
So moved.
Point the two applicants.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Good luck to both of you.
Thank you. Thank you for volunteering.
Getting into new business, number one, Edmund W. Mulvihill Jr., Director of Veteran's Services, submitting request to hold the annual Veterans' Day Parade and ceremonies on Monday, November 11, 2019. Not all at once, though.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Howard.
If I, if I could, the letter that he submitted to us, just that the parade will step off Monday at 10 o'clock in the morning, bald school, I believe, right?
Correct.
And 10:00 AM, and the ceremonies will take place on the town common at the Dempsey Memorial here. And so we expect the ceremonies to be at 10:45 or so, and it should be a very nice observance, as it usually is, so. Information, sir.
Do you have a second on that?
Yes.
I have a motion and a second for information. All in favor?
To approve the request.
Oh, I'm sorry. To approve the request as information also. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Number two, Jose Aramam, Norwood Portuguese Club, 1090 Washington Street, submitting request for a one-day malt beverage license, beer and wine, on Sunday, November 10, from 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM at that location.
So moved?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the license for one day. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Number three, Smira Donovan, S.E.B. Housing LLC, 257 Hillside Avenue in Needham, submitting a notice of lottery for seven affordable homes to be built at Copperwoods in Canton. Motion?
Action.
This should be for information.
I have a motion for information and a second. All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, just one thing on the question.
Sir?
Just a, just a little bit on the way these lotteries work. Copperworks is a brand-new, a brand-new development over at the old Paul Revere site, Paul Revere Copperworks site, and later, the Plymouth Rubber Industrial Site. So on the Ponson Street, you can see it from the Ponson, it's coming along very well. And people, people who qualify by means, by virtue of their limited income can apply. It's a lottery, so like any other lottery, and seven, I think, seven, right? Is it seven?
Seven will be available.
Yeah, seven. They'll be chosen. This is the nonprofit that's conducting, S.E.B. Housing is conducting the lottery. Anyway, anybody interested, it's going to be a beautiful property, so by all means, apply.
Thank you, sir.
Good one.
So we have a motion and a second as information. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Number four, Tony Mazuko, General Manager, A, submitting intermunicipal agreement with the town of Sharon to share the services of an energy manager. To be approved and signed by this board. I'll deal with that one first. Mr. Manager, you want to explain that to the board?
Sure. As the board knows, we've been working for some time on using grant funds we have available through the Light Department to bring on an energy manager to help centralize the management of our energy functions throughout the town, including school buildings as well. We're looking towards eventually sharing a centralized facility department, but this is our opportunity to really try to save some money, save some thermal units, and economize inefficiency, and be a little bit more efficient in the management of the energy in our buildings, which, as you know, is a probably well over a million-dollar ticket item townwide. The agreement that's before you is to share this position with the town of Sharon, so we're getting the benefit of a full-time body at half the cost. The actual document that's in front of you is what's known as an IMA or an intermunicipal agreement. That's simply the contract you generally sign between two municipalities because there's a format set out in statute and they're enforced by the Department of Revenue. We'll be doing something similar in the next couple of weeks for the sewer agreement. So that's just the mechanism that allows us to share the service with the town of Sharon.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Mr. Mazuko, just a couple of questions on this. First of all, I think, Mr. Hajar, it's true, this is, this position actually is a part of the organizational chart and sort of the first wave of a combined facilities department, if that ever comes to be. Isn't that true?
Yes.
Okay, that's great. This, so, this, this position, would this fulfill a requirement for the Green Communities' pledge?
So one of the things we want to do with this position is, is have this person also fill some of the, help with some of the grant writing once we're a Green Community, and also some of the record-keeping that's required. As you know, once we enter the Green Communities program, we get an initial grant of about $180,000. We're able to follow that up and apply for up to a quarter of a million dollars a year over the next five years. The state is also looking at doing sort of Green Communities 2.0 in the next couple of years, which will revamp the grant program, where we have the potential for an enormous amount of grant money through the program. The backend management of those grants is actually a little bit complicated and time-consuming, so this person will be able to assist with that and with those initiatives as well, as well as coming to the table with us and making sure that we're picking the most energy-efficient projects and managing those projects as well. They'll also be able to help us out on the management of some of the small projects on, throughout the town. If you read back through our capital appropriations the last five years and even going out the next five years, we're almost always doing some sort of an energy project every single year, so it'll also assist in the management of some of those small projects. Sometimes it's replacing a boiler, sometimes it's as simple as replacing LED lights in a particular building. It'll also help to start to centralize some of our functions. We rely on our building managers to do that, but we don't have a centralized energy policy. We actually don't have any policies on devices that we use, where we use space heaters when we don't use them, what our timing controls are. So a lot of that is the low-hanging fruit that somebody helps take care of right off the bat, but you end up seeing the savings after a fairly short period of time with an aggressive energy manager. They've become a lot more common in the public sector. They've been now in the private sector for quite a while.
Yeah, so in a way, so we're anticipating, you know, if the facilities, the combined facilities department comes to be, we're anticipating something we wanted to incorporate as a part of that as well.
Absolutely. So we're able to kind of do that with grant funding and do it ahead of the, ahead of the spectrum, which is helpful.
And it's also, so it's not just a matter of like going around and telling everyone to turn down the thermostat. I mean, this is really sort of putting together...
No, that's what I usually do.
Right, yeah, right. So, and I mean, it seems to me, you probably, if done effectively, you could realize savings well in excess of what it's going to cost you, which, by the way, would be, what, more or less annually?
Well over a million dollars for total utility costs, and if you, I mean, if you take the schools alone, I think you got, one building might have the $200,000 or $300,000 utility cost. I mean, our costs are substantial throughout the town.
And this, this position would cost us how much?
So the, the salary range for the position, it's an N-10. I believe that salary range is in the low 60s to the low $80,000. It went through the planning board, sorry, the personnel board's typical rating process. They looked at comparable communities, they looked at the skill set, they rated it, they came out with an N-10. It's that cost plus the benefits, and that, those costs are shared equally with the town of Sharon. So maybe $50,000 for the town in Norwood, and we're, we're agreeing to fund the position and share it with Sharon in one-year increments. So if we ever found we weren't getting the value out of it, we're really only committing to a year for the process at each time.
And, yeah, I know you talked at 1.2 about sort of expanding the consortium, too. We have two towns involved in this, but it might become more.
Correct. So the benefit to an energy manager, you really see it in the first couple of years of operation, where they're really being aggressive about energy savings, and after that, you're really looking at maintenance. So what Fred Turkington and my counterpart in Sharon and I have talked about is, we're, we got to get this started with our two towns, we've got to get up and running, and as we start to see some capacity in the position, we may bring on a third town, maybe even a fourth town, and then split the cost even further, because then we're at that point where we really just need that maintenance of what we're able to achieve after the first couple of years. So we're, we're intentionally designing, and we structured the IMA in a way that we could add other towns to it to share the cost down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Mazuko. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The salary was one of my questions. So there'd be half of that, right?
Correct, and half of the benefit cost as well.
What credentials would you expect this person to have?
So they're likely to have a, at least a bachelor's degree, and then some energy certifications, maybe their LEED certified to inspect LEED buildings, for instance. You get a wide variety of folks, some coming from the facilities end, some coming more from the energy management end, but we're focusing more on somebody with probably a facilities background, which is what we really need. We don't sort of need an energy manager up here to tell us what our energy policy should be. We need more of a boots-on-the-ground energy manager to help manage the enormous energy costs we have throughout the town.
And where, where would this person be sitting and who would they be reporting to?
So when you structure an IMA for a joint appointment, it's, they report to the town manager in Norwood and the town manager in Sharon. We're going to hook them up with a laptop, they'll probably work remotely from one of the offices here, because we're a little short of office space in Town Hall. Once the Light Department facility frees up, we might be able to actually give them a workspace there, but it really is somebody who's going to work some of their time planning and programming from a laptop, but is going to need to be mobile in the facilities. So we're going to give them a laptop, we're going to give them a, probably a tablet or cellular device, and they'll largely be remote, but they'll be reporting to Norwood and Sharon on a daily basis.
You mean, be remote from their house?
No, no, no. When I say remote is, they're likely to be working from facilities. We're not, it's not a work-from-home type of situation.
Good.
I just don't have, we're somewhat limited in office space in this building. I think I've got a, an intern cubby in my office that might work for them.
What about Public Works?
You know, we might have a spare office over there. I think we have the, the Solid Waste Office might be spare. So we, we want to give them some of a house, but it's not really a, it's not a position where they're designed to work from that office space for 40 hours a week. It's just where they...
Well, no, I understand, but you got to have a base.
Correct. We got to find, so it'll, it'll be managed out of my office, we'll, we'll find a home for them.
Thank you.
DPW or my intern cubby.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Anything else on the board? Mr. Plasko?
Thank you. Sounds good to me, the facilities department, that this has been envisioned, has been for the first two iterations of trying to get a feel it, facilities department, too. This was always part of the discussion. Sounds like a way to get us started and give it a good try without too firm of a commitment either of some reason to have a second thought about it. The only thing is, on the last page, just before the signature, section four provisions for financial safeguards, I think we need to edit that. It says, "In all requirements of contributions received from Reading,"
Okay.
I think that's the town, and all receiving from the town of Sharon.
Correct.
I might want to edit that before we sign.
My...
Sign, signature page, have that corrected.
My recommendation from the board, as I said, the IMAs are a standard document that one town tends to copy from another, so I'll take responsibility for not picking up on the Reading. I'd ask the board to authorize, well, to sign it and authorize the manager to make any final edits subject to town council's approval if the town of Sharon has some legal issue with the language. They've already agreed in principle, but as you know, lawyers sometimes like to go back and forth and change up to them or whatnot. So if the board would go forward with that, we'd be able to, hopefully be on board, maybe right around the holidays or maybe right after.
Approve the sign and signature page and authorize the manager as recommended.
Before we do that, Mr. Hajar has some comments.
It looks like everyone's in support of this night, and is strongly in support of it as well, not because of the, just because of the facilities. This is a long overdue, and while we don't like to compare ourselves to private industry that often, this is one of those cases where it is good to compare ourselves, and they're way ahead of us, and it's pretty common in private industry to have individuals that are dedicated to energy management. And to emphasize Tony's point, we're not looking to someone to look at us at 50,000 foot. We want them on the ground, talking about standards on equipment, standards on fixtures, and developing policies. And the thing is that because these are in one-year increments, it doesn't have to be permanent. So that, that's why I say that, but I'm glad to hear the strong support for what we do need. It would be particularly just thinking, Mr. Chairman.
And I pretty much agree with everybody's comments. I think this is, energy conservation in itself is something that has to be addressed, and the sooner we do it, the better off we're going to be. And number two, as my colleague, Mr. Plasko, said, it's beginning, it's the beginning of a foundation for our so-called facilities department, and it'll all fit together very nicely, so I'm in favor of it also. Do I have a motion from the board?
So moved.
Motion, is there a motion to signs that we need here?
Yes, sir.
And to allow the town manager to amend it as deemed necessary.
And with the change of Reading to Sharon, I believe.
So moved or seconded, whatever you need.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. You also have, under item B, Mr. Mazuko is submitting an agreement with Clear Channel Outdoor LLC and the town of Norwood to be approved by the board. Might want to explain that to everybody at home?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Clear Channel Outdoor LLC is a outdoor advertising company. They're the company that's replacing one of their current fixed billboards on Route One with a digital billboard. Now, the Board of Selectmen through our process here don't have an approval or denial of that. It's strictly a land-use process. They've worked their way through, I believe, the ZBA and the planning board as required. There's a statutory framework and a local bylaw. There was a court case many years ago that you are allowed to replace a static billboard, if you will, with a digital billboard. The court felt that that was acceptable. So what's before us is an agreement that generally these companies come before towns, and they do two things. And one is, they offer us a small amount of time on the billboard for important public[1779.36] small amount of time on the billboard for important public service announcements, so that could be a safety announcement about road closures or school closures or an amber alert or something like that. You also can use some of that time for community alerts, uh, it is limited, so we'll have to see what we wanna actually do for those community alerts, but effectively we get a little bit of time on the billboard for our announcements. We also get the effect of a pilot payment, it's not actually a pilot payment because they're required to pay taxes on it like they are, it's similar to a host community agreement that we have of, I believe it's twenty thousand dollars a year.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. That payment amount would be used for downtown infrastructure and marketing in the downtown and the water, uh, the Washington Street corridor, so they usually like to give towns a little bit of money annually while they have the digital billboards up to be used for some sort of similar advertising and marketing. We thought downtown would be the appropriate type of investment to make, it gives us a little bit of money to spend on the downtown once we collect the first payment, which is, you know, we're, we're still trying to get a sound system up and running where we think we're halfway there, we're trying to do it for the few funds we have, and every now and then when it comes up to things like, do we want to do new barrels, do we want to do new hanging plants, do we want to do new banners, there's just, it's quite expensive for what's a big aesthetic bonus or benefit to the downtown and the Washington Street corridor, so I think that'll be beneficial. Again, we don't get to approve or deny, they're going in, this is just sort of an extra benefit that the town gets, so it's really, it's a win for us for a project that we otherwise wouldn't be able to allow or disallow.
On the plan, Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
A couple of things, Mr. Mazuka, one, the, the public service announcements, who writes the copy?
It, it's, someone in the town would get it to them and then it goes to...
Someone will figure out...
Yeah, it would probably end up being coordinated through the manager's office, we'll have to take a look at how much time we actually are allowed. They would probably put an emergency announcement up, but some towns put, you know, special town meetings, some towns put, you know, a play that's coming up, I mean, you get a little bit of town, it, it doesn't, it doesn't hurt, if we get a lot of requests, we'll have to tailor it down, but it's, it's a net benefit.
Okay.
There isn't a lot of amount of time, it's not a lot of time, but there is a block that's allowed for the town to use. Like Mr. Mazuka said, it's not something that we can obstruct because pretty much by right, they can put it where it is.
Correct, it's, it's a land use process, this is just a benefit the town...
The benefit is, money's coming into the, what I call the Washington Street corridor, which extends also into South Road.
South Road, absolutely.
So, I don't want people to think it's just through the uptown area, it goes all the way through the uptown area, all the way down past the hospital into South Road.
While it's on my mind, can I just, one idea, this is totally off the subject, but you talked about banners on the poles, on the, on the Washington Street corridor, you know, one town that I'm familiar with has done, has taken images of famous people and made banners of those, and if, if we are gonna do a big one-hundred-and-fiftieth celebration, we could brand the banners with a logo and put images of these folks.
Absolutely, I've seen some towns do it with veterans from the town who served, I mean, it's, it's a really good idea. And the challenge there is those banners, they're over a hundred bucks a piece, so when somebody says, can we put up twenty new banners, it's like, oh man, I gotta go find two grand to put up twenty new banners.
Well, you also have to find reproducible images, if you're gonna do this thing, you have to find reproducible images.
But that's the kind of thing in future years, we'd have a little bit of money for downtown funding, I know we've talked about doing something in front of the theater next year, sometimes it's, we can generally replace what we lose in a given year, if a bench gets damaged or a barrel gets damaged, but if somebody said, can we put out fifteen new barrels downtown, it's, oh boy, I better, you know, you're digging somewhere to find that money for stuff that has a big aesthetic impact. I know I've had a couple of meetings recently about changing the decorations in South Road in the next couple of years, we used to have bigger hang decorations, they kind of, the wreaths sort of went, went away, there's been a desire, or intend to see if they can return them, but those are expensive as well, so it just gives us a little bit of funds each year going forward to address some of those aesthetically important items.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Two points, one is, I was glad on the cover letter, Tony, that you talked about money to finish the sound system downtown, I really hope that, that is a priority of, of this board, we receive some money, but it's not enough to do what we need to get done.
We're, we're trying to get the project to fit the dollar amount, so I don't know if when we'd receive our first amount from this, whether it would work, we, we might have that system up and running by the holidays, the goal is to, uh, we originally had a goal of Halloween, we had to push it out because we're trying to fit the square peg in the round hole and make it work.
That's tough. Second is, on the compensation talk, or the term, this is for ten years, subject to extension by Clear Channel upon sixty days written notice to the town, so is it ten years at a time?
It, it's really their discretion, because at the end of the day, they could extend it for a year or choose not to extend it, it's, there's no requirement for them to do it, they're just...
It's really like pilots, you can try to talk and negotiate with them, but ultimately it's what they're willing to do.
Yeah, so it's kind of sign, sign the deal and get them in, if they don't want to do it going forward, there's really nothing we can, really nothing we can do.
Nice, and so if they continue it for another twenty years, it's the same twenty-five thousand, is no chance of...
We could, we could sit down and try to negotiate with them, again, they're, and I brought that up with the, the cost escalators, but again, if there's, there's no obligation on their part to do anything, so...
No, it has to end to give us the twenty-five thousand.
They tend to be charitable anyway, you know what I mean?
Correct.
If they're doing well in the town, they'll give back.
Yeah, it'll, it'll depend on where their revenues are, I actually had a fascinating conversation with somebody who does, works in the advertising industry, that they think advertising in ten or twenty years, you're not gonna see it on billboards, it's all gonna be in the car because cars are going to be driverless, so you're not gonna be looking out at a billboard, you're gonna be looking at your dashboard and an ad for McDonald's or something will pop up. I don't know if that's the future of advertising, it's not my industry, but in ten years, billboards may not be making the kind of money that they are today.
So, we'll take what we can get for the time.
That would be my recommendation, whatever we can get, it's, it's more than we had before.
You know, not to belabor this any longer, but we talked about banners, who's give us an opportunity to also look at South Road, perhaps have a banner at that location, not just one up in the old center.
Absolutely.
As you're leaving the town, you could also have a banner somewhere else, say, Hoss Pool, for instance, in that area. So, do I have a motion from the board?
Motion to direct the manager to sign.
The manager to sign the development agreement by Clear Channel LLC.
Have a second from Mr. Maloney?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Lastly, we have unfinished business, Morse House Rules and Regulations. Questions from the board or comments? Sir?
Well, I'd just say that Tony and I did sit down because that was, I think, the main reason for the one-week extension was to allow Tony to have a careful review of it, and we did, and there was some minor changes made, but overall, I think it covers all the specific issues that he want to cover. I know that others want to talk about fees, and my recommendation would be, or request is that if the board so chooses, is to approve rules and regulations where in the document we already say the board selectmen can charge a fee, but when I met with Tony, he had a good suggestion of coming up with a tiered level of potential fees depending on if you're a for-profit or nonprofit or others, and so we could come back to the board with a sort of fixed fee schedule that you, everyone can discuss and consider, but that's already covered in the, in the rules about charging a fee, so what we would come back with is something more specific that could be acted upon.
Anything else from the board? Did you have something?
Well, we got a, oh, we signed, so I don't know if others did, some comments, a letter from a former selectman, Harold Dela Dunnehugh, they got some comments on these rules and regulations and recommendation of a, an advisory committee. Mr. Hajar's draft had a section in there about a rules committee, was it?
Uh huh. Advisory committee.
And I don't know how we're expanding what the purpose of this rules committee is or isn't, it seems to me that if we were setting up a separate organization to run this building and operate this building separate from administration, we might need such a group, and I don't see it as just part of our rules and regulations of operating the building. I think we, as I have brought out, have a lot of things we should be answering, first of all, about what we want to do with the building and how we're gonna handle it, and that would then determine whether or not there's any use for any such group. I know I personally have concerns about allowing it to continue to be used by private individuals for private purposes, it's a public building, we're taking it over, we have expectations from the building department of things that need to be done to that building, if it's gonna be, are gonna allow the public to continue to enter and use the building, we need to understand how we're gonna pay for those and who's gonna see that they happen, and when are they gonna happen, so I think we have some, you know, broad areas to discuss. The rules are generally fine, I had a bunch of small questions on some of the points that we could go over one by one if we wanted to do that, but to me, they're also more like the common and more assigned or designed towards a place of common assembly and free speech than it is the operation of a building. This is a building, it depends on how it'll operate and maintain and how it's gonna function, so I think, you know, the rules really follow what it is we really want to do with that building and how we're gonna handle it. I don't see trying to keep a building, if we don't have specific needs for housing, certain town departments and that type of thing, or it's not a building that's designed for that type of use, then I think any use, any use that we do put into the building should be, there should be set fees for it, and we should be receiving funds trying to offset some of the operational costs. I know, as Mr. Ja just said, suggesting leaving that down the road, but I think that's important that we understand that there should be fees, we shouldn't have line like we have in here that the selectmen may choose to, because then we give, we charge one party, but we don't charge the other party, and how much, how much you're charging, it gets to be too, oosy-goozy, gets to be too informal, and leaves us to a lot of criticism as to how that would be. I'm also afraid of the possibility of certain people saying, hey, if we don't charge, here's a place that we could have our monthly meeting and not, doesn't cost us anything, and I don't think that would be necessarily the intent, so I think, I think there's just more tightening up and more discussion about what's gonna happen down here than, than where we are tonight, firstly.
Thank you for that. Discussions about the rules and regulations, how much we're gonna charge for fees, advisory committees, commissions, whatever you want to call them, I think we're putting the cap before the hosp, by personal opinion. I think we have to find exactly what we have to do to that building to get it up to the point where it's, it's safe for the, the public to go in there. Right now, the, the billing inspector tells us he does not want anybody to use the second floor, but yet there are historical displays on the second floor. Do we need certain lighting, I've been told we need exit signs and so on and so on. If we get into handicap regulations, how far do we have to go? Do we have to widen doorways? Do we have to put special devices into the building? There's a lot of questions I have about bringing the building up to, I don't want to use the word, but up to code, if you will, how far do we have to go and how much is it gonna cost the town to, to get to that point, that's my issue. So, I think a lot of this is worthy of conversation, but I think I'd rather personally postpone it until we can find out what we have to do, and work with the billing department and maybe have somebody look at the billing, an outside person look at the billing and determine what has to be brought up to, to code again.
I just had one comment, I just didn't think really that, and I don't know the exact answer, but there's been reference almost as a matter of fact that we can look forward to community preservation funds for this building. I had discussions when we were looking at repairs for the town hall with representative at DOR that was supposedly the guru on community preservation, and she informed me that based on DOR's interpretation, CPA funds can be used, like if there was a historic fireplace in the building and we're trying to restore that fireplace, but you couldn't use it for an elevator to modernize the building, only for historic purposes, to do yourself out of the historic building.
Mr. Chairman, that's actually not true, because when Bill mentioned that to me a couple of weeks ago, I went, I went back and Matt gave me five projects that are similar to what we may be proposing for Morse House, and they all had to do with upgrades, added fire alarm system, exit lighting, emergency lighting, signs, elevator shafts, all approved projects, they weren't projects that were being proposed, these were approved.
By CPA funds?
Yes, yes.
From where?
Different, what do you mean, from where? Different towns.
Different towns, yeah.
Well, I'd be glad to send you what Mr. Wall sent me, there were five different products from five different towns, anywhere from something building similar to ours to town halls that got approval for that fund, so he says it's pretty much wide open, there are standards that you have to go by, but you're not limited to just fixing a historical piece of, a piece of a building, you're allowed to bring it up to code so that people can use it for its intended purposes, as long as you're following the guidelines of the historical...
And I think that's probably where I was heading it.
As I said, I'm an expert, not certain, but that was my understanding from conversation with DOR, it may be the towns have appropriated this money and no one's yet challenged it, but the towns that have been challenged, they went after the sponsor, but it was appropriated.
I mean, I think everybody wants to keep the, the basic integrity of the building, the historic nature and so on and so on, but we also have to protect the people who are gonna utilize that building to make sure it's a safe environment for everybody to be in, and if for some reason something, God forbid, does happen, it's gonna fall back on the town, including the BOS right here. Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I think, I, I agree with, with Mr. Plasko. First of all, if we want to use the, the building more or less as it is now, I think the regulations that have been drafted are fine, I think the edits work out well. I agree, I, I don't, I'm not really crazy about a five-person advisory committee, I think that's our role here, I think that's what got us, that's kind of got us to this point already. I would perhaps endorse something like a Friends of Morse House group or something like that, which was designed to promote, to market, promote, and sort of help us share the, the historical value of the building, but I, I'm not really crazy about an advisory committee per se. But the other thing too is, I think, as Mr. Plasko said, the rules and regulations, whatever they come out to be, have to follow from the purpose of the building and our overall intention, and that's probably where we really need to have a conversation. For, for example, I mean, you know, Bill, I mean, one of the things is, if we're gonna do anything with this building and make it a community center, we've got to take it big here, because there really are a lot of sort of, you know, probably questionable code violations that would need to be, we need to get into compliance with a lot of, with, uh, current code.
It's not necessarily that there's violations, it's just it's a historic building, so it's not necessarily up to...
Definitely, yeah.
It's not insulated, for one thing, it's not insulated.
But if we were gonna really promote it to use it bigger, we would want to get updated on those things, I think. You know, particularly as, as Paul said, the second floor, I mean, the second floor is a valuable part of that building, we can't use it now, you know? So, I think, I think probably the conversation, maybe it involves people who are involved with the historical society at the Day House or some others, maybe who have some ideas on how we can use a historic building, repurpose the building, or take it big, so to speak. We have a historical building across the street, an old firehouse, which we lease out as a restaurant. I don't know if that's a good idea for the Morse House or not, but I think it's one of these things where we're, where a brainstorming session involving a number of parties in the town might be helpful.
I think that's what's important, to sit down and find out what road we want to travel, and how do we get this building to where we want it to be, rather than going out and, rules and regulations will come, the discussion of advisory groups will come and so on and so on, but maybe Mr. Mazuka could look at somebody who has some architectural background in this type of venue and come in and look at the billing and says, well, you have to do this, you have to do that, and so on and so on.
We did program in the budget money for FY twenty-one, it was in the capital plan, so it's not technically in the budget, for sort of a full analysis and feasibility study. I think what we can probably do this year is get an existing conditions report, which might at least give us a starting point to know what really we should be doing to the building before we make some of those decisions, if we go down the road, do we want to put an elevator in, do we not want to, I mean, whether or not we can use CPA money, the question will come, is that something we want to do to the building, do you want to make that investment to it, because it would be rather substantial, so if the board would be interested in doing something along those lines, seeing what we can get for our current year existing conditions report, certainly I could look into that.
I, I personally think that's one of the first things you should be doing, is getting something that tells us, this is where you are, this is where you want to be, and this is how you're going to get there.
I think the where we want to be, though, involved, probably means we host a meeting with some other people here.
Exactly.
And just, you know, hash out some ideas. Maybe not in one of our meetings, maybe, you know, offline, or in some other...
I know people have worked hard on rules and regulations, and there are people petitioning for advisory groups, and so on, and so on, and debate on fees, but I think all that should come after we solve some of these other problems, my personal opinion.
Well, how do you want to handle that? You want to send that over to the manager to look at, and come back with recommendations?
I would like to turn it over to the manager, have him look at recommendations with the funding that he does have, and I know there's additional funding in the year 21, to find out what has to be done in the building to make it safe for all parties concerned, and what is required by law to get it to that point, and hopefully we can vote on that tonight, and get it going.
So, Mr. Chairman, what are you going to do with those groups that have meetings lined up per a previously submitted schedule?
Maybe there should be some kind of a clause where we're not held responsible if something should happen, or some kind of a letter they could sign, and say, yes, you can have your meeting here, but if the roof falls in, the second floor falls in, and you go up there against recommendations, we're not going to be held liable. Something along those lines. I'm not trying to belabor this thing, and drag it out, and drag it out, and drag it out, but I want that building to be structurally safe for everybody. I know we've been using it for years, but I don't think we're totally up to code to where we should be, whether it's, it's not a new structure, and I understand that, and it's going to be different with the historic structure. Maybe we don't have to do as much, but yet we have to do something, my opinion.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
I kind of agree with what I heard you, as I heard you and Mr. Maloney in particular, speaking about looking further into it, and possibly asking the manager, but I also understand Mr. Gaj's last comment, that there are some groups traditionally been using this building. Maybe we could authorize and allow use as it has been scheduled through the manager through this calendar year, and that the building then be closed until we figure out how to proceed.
And in some way indemnify us, so that we're not held responsible, like I said, if somebody should fall through from the second floor onto the first floor.
So, we can definitely get indemnification language, we can get some sort of form or waiver signed, which is something we do for most of our other buildings, but are you saying you'd want to stop all access after January?
Until, until we figure out what we're doing, yeah.
I like that.
Well, we can do that, we wouldn't be displacing some of the groups that regularly use it, but...
And that gives you a couple of months to tell people they have to find another home. They shouldn't be in there right now, and still we get exit lights, still we get things done, you know, the liability's on the town, if we just continue. There is for the next two months, too, but we're trying to be a little considerate here, too, of people that have used this traditionally, particularly during these last two months, holidays, that we don't want to suddenly slam the door on those, but some people might have to get the door slammed on them until we figure out what we're doing. And if we can, if we can resolve it sooner than that, great, but I, you know, I'm anticipating that we wouldn't, that's why I picked that date.
It's a historic building, I want people to have the opportunity to use it, but I also want it safe for everybody that uses it.
So, step one is then to take it, to take action on the calendar, step two is to take action on surveying the structure, is that how we're...
Yes, and turn it all over with the manager.
Okay, and commitments already made, we want to honor those, or allow those people who've already signed up to use it, too?
If somebody's been using it on a regular basis?
Couple of different groups. The Norwood Rotary Club does on a fairly regular basis, the, there's a Nepalese school that does, runs a class there on Sundays, a small group, fifteen, twenty kids.
Yeah, but if they have a regular class, it's taking them any time to find another home.
They are, so we can let folks know that, I mean, I guess if you give me a week or so, we can at least sit down, I could sit down with the building commissioner, and our insurance company, and see what the requirements are for the current use that we have in the building, make sure that that's either acceptable or not, or what needs to be done, and maybe, maybe there's some simple things we can do, and have it ready by the end of the year, maybe if they say, listen, you really shouldn't do it, because the codes are different based on a home, which is what it is, versus a place of public assembly.
They're not using the second floor, are they?
I don't believe they are using the second floor.
Because I was wanting to hear pretty adamant about not using the second floor.
Yeah, I don't believe they're...
And he recommended the first would get uplights and things, but he wasn't as adamant about that.
Yeah.
When high school.
We can take a detailed look, and get something back to the board pretty quickly.
Do I have a motion to that effect, or... You want to repeat the motion, please?
To table further discussion on rules, while we request the manager to look further into the physical requirements of the building for future use, and report back, and in the meantime, allow scheduled use, a request from organizations that have used the building during November and December, to continue to use it this year, provided the town receives some indemnification in advance, and that there be no further use intended after December 31st, 2019, until further action by this board.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
We stand at four to one. And Mr. Mazuko, you'll start on that.
Yes, sir, we'll get right on it.
That brings us to the manager's update.
Sorry, no, no updates for the board this evening, Mr. Chairman.
I am not complaining.
I mean, I can make something up if you'd like, but...
No, no, that'll be fine. Selectmen's agendas, Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things. We received a letter here from my good friend, Ed Hickey, who is president of the Norwood Diamond Club. It thanks us on a couple of scores, one for the, for the grant of a thousand dollars from the BACH Fund, which enabled the Diamond Club to maintain the same fee of a hundred and twenty-five dollars per player to play fall ball, and so Ed thanks us for that, and the second matter is to thank Mark Ryan, Mike Driscoll, and their crews that maintain the fields for our league. Per usual, the guys did a great job on the Balch, Willett, and Wilson Street Diamonds during their busy fall schedule. Please extend our gratitude to Mr. Ryan and all his crews. Sincerely, Ed Hickey, president of the Diamond Club. Second thing, Mr. Chairman, I understand that you, Mr. Chairman, attended the little ceremony over on University Ave last week, the, was that the topping off of the skating club of Boston, was that it?
Yes, it was.
It was? And did you have time to engage in any conversation with Dr. Tenley Albright, or any other famous people?
You know I would not miss an opportunity to have conversation with Dr. Tenley Albright.
Well, I just want, I'm glad for you on that score, so I was having some fun. By the way, do we have, I'm sorry, just in case, do we have anything on the liquor license on the skating club of Boston, any?
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Plasko?
It has seemed to have been some delay in trying to get that passed, and we're trying to get to the bottom of just why that's not moving past it, but in the meantime, just today, I heard from Representative Rogers, Phil Buckley, who was setting up, setting up a meeting to try to go over a number of issues having to do with skating club, in particular the license, and hopefully we'll get that, if not Friday, Monday, or Tuesday next week, and hopefully it's not getting things moving along faster than I had been.
I would like to see that happen myself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two items tonight, if I could. The first one is that last week, I spoke about our Norwood High School marching band winning another championship, and this week, our Norwood High School marching band is now the 2019 New England champions, and I just say, kudos to these people. I think it's fifty-something young high school people who are in our band, and they are incredible. Thank you for that one, Mr. Chair. The other one is that I throw it out for the feelings of the board, that the meeting on November 26th is Thanksgiving week, and it's my feeling that with the light agendas that we've had lately, that we, that we, you know, do not have that meeting. So, I just throw it out to the board.
And what was the date on that meeting?
Twenty-sixth.
The twenty-sixth...
Two days before Thanksgiving.
...of November, that would be three weeks from tonight. I personally oppose to it, because we have two Tuesdays in December that we are not meeting, and I think we have responsibility to be here as much as we can. Tonight was a fairly light agenda, last week was a fairly light agenda, but with that said, we still have somewhat of a responsibility to be here. Any other comments from the board?
I understand, Mr. Chairman, but there are quite a few towns in the Commonwealth that have their meetings every other week only, and I just throw that out.
Oh, trip of the town, no way.
Yes.
Is that in the form of a motion, or...
Yes, I'll make a motion to that effect, for what it's worth.
Do I have a second for that motion? Going once, going twice? Go on.
Did you deliberately do that to me?
No, I did it on its own. So, that motion has failed. We will be here on the 12th, the 19th, and the 26th. Thank you for your interest, though, Mr. Howard.
Thank you for nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Well, not for my contrarian one.
No, only kidding.
I can live with it. Is that it for you?
That's it, thank you.
Mr. Plasko?
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Hajar?
Two things, Mr. Chairman, one is I passed out the traffic safety advisory committee process guidelines, after we cleaned it up after the last time we discussed it, so I think we're pretty much all, all set and ready to go. It's pretty flexible to allow for diverse review of different data information, depending on what the issue is, and then come forward, so unless...
We voted last time?
Yes, we voted the last time.
So, there's no action?
Nope, just wanted to give a clean copy of what it looks like.
Thank you.
Second, Mr. Chairman, is I just want to let everybody know, they did file another parent of conflict of interest or disclosure, anyways, with the relationship I had regarding the resolution between the Norwood Airport Commission, the FAA, and Verizon regarding the lease of land that they have. I, when I was working with Verizon, I did that deal for them, so I wanted to disclose that, that I did not, and have not worked with the Norwood Airport Commission. We worked with, through a third party that had the rights to lease, and then sublease it to Verizon, so there was no involvement between myself and anybody from the Norwood Airport Commission. So, when I spoke to Dave DeLuca, and then eventually the Ethics Commission attorney, there would only be two things that would have to happen for me to recuse myself. One is if I was acting as an agent for Verizon, which I am not, I've been retired for over three years, and have no financial ties to them, or two, if somehow during this whole operation, I became personally financially responsible for some unknown reason, but it could, and that doesn't appear to be the case right now, so other than that, I am free to act in the best interest of the town, which of course I will, so I just wanted to let the public know, and that I have filed that with the town clerk's office, and we can move on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Getting back to the traffic safety advisory committee, Mr. Plasko, line number three, it talks to under review during the past five to ten years. I think you have thought both of us had an issue with going out ten years?
Well, I talked about five years, thinking ten might be too long, but I think our conversation went back and forth, we decided that this left it up to the committee, but we just kind of stated it that way, gave that period of time.
Yeah, we added the as, at the discretion of the committee, so that way they can provide whatever we feel is necessary, based on whether or not it's relevant to the decision at hand.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept?
Mr. Gaj indicated we had, but if you want a new motion...
This is a clean...
We don't need it, because we approved it, this is just a clean version.
So, this is just a clean copy?
We're all set, Mr. Chairman, we don't need any motions.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney, for that. Thank you. So, do you have anything else, Mr. Hajar?
Nope.
Okay, then, the good news is I have nothing for this evening, either. So, before we get into a motion, I just want to say we'll be back next week on the 12th of November, followed by the 19th of November, followed by the 26th of November, this month.
Will we?
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, and we'll see you next week.